Isn't a fight, by the way, this is all friendly. Um, but we could.
I hope it's more entertaining than Tyson match.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, did anyone watch that? I watched the Tyson match. It was, uh, yeah, it was, yeah, it was, I didn't get up, I watched a repeat. But anyway, yes. This is about celebrating, uh, being a clerk, learning about people's personal journeys. So we're going to start with you, Emma, and then we're going to go over to Samuel, and then we're going to have some questions.
As John said, uh, we've. I I do like a bit of LinkedIn. I like to promote the sector and, uh. As John said, he, you know, just happened to sit on my table at, uh, the national conference this year and, uh, and he said, oh. You're Emma Payne. I said, yes, I am Emma Payne, so. And he said, well, he said, I've got this idea. And I said, yep, fine, absolutely. Anything that is there to promote the sector. So. Um, I like, I'm accidental clerk. Um, I like a lot of people on the survey. Uh, you've sort of fell into it. So I think sixty three percent, uh, it was an unexpected journey. So. Um, uh, my name's, uh, Emma Payne. I'm town clerk at Stockford Town Council. Um, I've not been doing this job for as long as. Some of you have, uh, Vanessa, twenty six years. I take my hat off to you. Um. Do you know what? I wished I'd found this job earlier. Um, I love what I do. Um, I love being part of the community. Wherever I've worked. I've always felt as if I was part of my community. Um, and I feel quite passionate about engaging. Uh, with my community, uh, as well. So what did I do, um, before I became a town clerk? Um, I worked for P and O. Um, I worked for P and O Cruises. Um, I had ten fantastic years, uh, lots of discounts on cruises and travel and stuff like that. Uh, which was lovely. Um, I had a career, a short career break, um, but I didn't want to be, when I had children. Uh, but I didn't want to, want to be one of those people that sat at home, uh, and didn't do anything. So I set up a small medical support company. We had a private. Hospital in the town where I lived at the time, um, did some billing, worked for an aviation doctor as well. Um, and it sort of came to a natural halt once the children were a bit older. Um, and I was chatting to an acquaintance, uh, and he, I said, I was looking for something else. And he said, well, I'm the chairman of a parish council. That's one of those. Um, we're looking for a new clerk. Um, it's only taking the minutes and writing a few letters. Now, how many people have started their career in local government on that basis? So it turns out, uh, they had a village hall, uh, which was condemned. Uh, they had village greens, including a pond. And they had three years' worth of, uh, agars that hadn't been submitted, uh, to the external auditor. So a bit of a baptism of fire. Um, I then took on another parish council and at the same time I was also working for, or running a youth council. Uh, for a town council where I lived. So a bit of a variety of roles, uh, but there were some great mentorship. Uh, in there from the town clerk at the town council where I was working with the youth council. Uh, I've been at Stockford for just over a year now. Um, I wanted to work. With a lo- a larger organisation, um, that sort of had the vision that I was looking for, the vision and the values. Um, it comes with its own challenges. Uh, within a, a month of starting, uh, they tasked me with looking at a staff restructuring. Um, there are other sort of challenges that came with it as well. Uh, so that staff restructuring. Meant that we have moved from seven members of staff up to fifteen. So recruitment has taken a, a lot of my attention, um, and also doing that training. Um, or bringing those people on board because I haven't necessarily employed staff that have had. Local government experience, much like myself when I started, because I was looking for those transferable skills. So, for example, my public realm manager, uh, he's come to me from RAF Fairford, puts on international air tattoos. Uh, but he has, he used to, he used to install sort of app play areas, well, not play areas, but sort of, um. Paint guns, sort of, re- ranges and stuff like that. So he's got a lot of. Transferable skills that I was looking for. My new cemetery and allotments officer had a career in health tech. But she'd got those transferable skills. And I think that's what I've learnt as well is that, you know. You can teach people how about, how local government works. Um, but if you've got those skills in the, in the instance, that really helps. Um, other things I've achieved whilst I've been there, um, we're in the process of relocating our library from one of our. Buildings, uh, in the town to the, the, uh, community centre where I'm based. Um, we've improved our community engagement. We've now got an events officer, um, and we're sort of having a. Uh, in community events and engagement with all sectors of, of the, the community. Uh, we've reorganised our committee structure, tried to reduce the number of meetings. Um, not as successfully as I'd hoped, but we're getting there, so that's fine. Um, and we've introduced a new record keeping, uh, system. Uh, we've transferred, we've moved on to SharePoint, um, and my new cemetery and allotments officer has been. Forensically going through all of our, uh, of our records and we haven't found many horror stories, uh, yet. So when John asked me to talk about being a veteran clerk versus a new clerk, sort of, I thought, well, you know. What's the advantage of being a, a, a veteran clerk? Um, you know, good num- good knowledge of local government policies and procedures. The ability to identify who you need to talk to, uh, who are the, the movers and shakers in your community. Um, and experience in managing sort of council resources as, as opposed to the fresh, uh, approach, uh, from Sam. You know, bringing a new perspective, uh, to our old processes, um, looking to innovate. Um, and to learn and adapt to the challenges, because I think we can all agree that it's a, a very challenging role. Um, and I think there's an opportunity for us to blend, um, those roles, uh, together. So what are the pros and cons of, of having a veteran clerk? And I'm sure Sam will wade in here. Uh, when he talks about what the pros and cons of having a, a new clerk are, um, as can, uh, Sarah. Um. We've done it before, you know, or if you haven't done it, you know someone that has done it before. So you've got knowledge. To help with that decision-making process. Um, we've had those issues, so we're able to use that experience in order to problem solve. Um, we liked, I'd like to think that we're reliable, um, you know, when we offer that stability. Um, and as I said at the top of the, the, the presentation, you know, I listened to myself talking to. Newer members of staff and, and I'm saying, explaining to them how the precept works. Oh, is that what hap- how it happens? And I, you know, so I'm able to help my new starters in their new roles as well. Um, now, I don't know whether this applies to me. You'll have to talk to my councillors, but what are the, what are the cons with a, a, a veteran clerk? Um, perhaps you might prefer the traditional methods, uh, you know, not embracing innovation. Um, over reliance on, on established procedures or in my office, I call it twaddie. That's the way we've always done it. Um, it does, it could limit flexibility, uh, and modernisation. Possible disconnect with younger residents. Um. I'd like to think that I would like to engage with the younger residents, though I do appreciate that we've recently done a skate park consultation. And I wasn't in schools, you know, talking to the thirteen-year-olds and asking them to fill in the survey. I gave, I gave that to my younger members of staff, uh, to engage on that. Um. We could be a little bit more expensive, but every penny counts. Um, and there is also the potential for complacency, you know. Why would I need to do that? Why do I need to innovate? Why do I need to do something different? So that's the pros and cons of a, of a veteran clerk. If I was offering advice, now I was thinking about this and I was saying to Sam last night, I do a lot of thinking on my dog walks. Um, my, if the, by the way, if the bank, if the door bangs, it's because my dog's scratching his ears and he's lying up against the door outside. Um, and I was thinking about this, this is what the, I'd thought about the things, what advice would I offer a new clerk? So, you know, Vanessa has very kindly. Given the benefit of her wisdom and some of it does resonate here. Keep learning. Um, there's always something new, you know, come on a Scribe webinar. Do SLCC trainings, be a member of the SLCC because then you can go to branch meetings, invaluable support, especially if you were a small. Uh, if you're a clerk on a small parish and you don't have that sort of teamwork. Um, build relationships, build relationships with other clerks, build relationships with councillors, build relationship with community, uh, leaders as well. Embrace those challenges. I mean, in, we're in all seriousness, we, uh, rec- all recognise that no two days are the same. Um, and everything, you know, but it, use that as an opportunity to learn again. Embrace those, those, uh, challenges that are going to come. Engage with the community. Uh, look at, uh, who those people are that you need to, to talk to. Vanessa touched on this and I think that was really good advice. Stay organised. Uh, look, master time management, uh, you know, really good tip there about putting all your calendar, your meetings in your calendar. Um, getting the task list o- on the back of that. Uh, we use a software from another IT provider. Um, that, uh, does all of that sort of on an automated basis and it's really useful.
You can mention the name. Don't worry, mention the names, we're good.
From Cloudy IT. Uh, so we're using the decision software from Cloudy IT, um, and. You know, it's, it's been, it's been a challenge to bed it in, uh, but it's really useful. So again, that's using AI, learning continuously. Um, but, you know, staying on top of things, staying organised, um, balance that tradition, uh, with innovation. Um, you know, we've got existing practices, but open, be open to modernising them. Um, and as I said previously, seek mentorship. Um, and these are all things that I would offer myself as a new clerk. Uh, to do, uh, as well. Um. But with John and I were talking at the, at the dinner, um, and I said, we spend so much time looking forward. We never, well, we rarely stop and reflect. And I think reflection is very important because it's this continuous, you know. Up and down, up and down, what have you. And when you're up there, you forget to look back down here. About how far you've come. So never stop reflecting on how, what your journey's been. Um, as I said, you know, patience and adaptability, it's a skill I think that has to be there in, in the, in the top five skills that, so a parish or town council clerk. Uh, needs to have. Um, balance those priorities, understand what's urgent as opposed to what's important. And also in those priorities, don't forget to balance yourself. Um, it's all very important, you know, we're all very worried about doing things and what have you, but don't forget to. To balance those priorities and include yourself in those priorities. Um, and value teamwork. Be that teamwork with your councillors, teamwork with your staff, um, or just. Your own personal network, you know, um, have that team and you'll go far. So there you go. That's, that's from me.
I don't know, I'd like, Emma and I, we've had a, a couple of sort of little conversations ahead of, um, ahead of the webinar, but it's, I don't know, even sort of like. Having heard lots of it, um, sort of like in different conversations, it was quite nice, like seeing it all come together and, um, in stuff like those slides and. I don't know, have a bit of a recap. And I guess, um, what I'm going to speak about is sort of like. Essentially very, very similar, but from a slightly different take. I think, um, it was a bit of a planned accident really for me to, to get into working. Um, within the sector where a lot of other people seem to have fallen into it much, much more accidentally. Um, and I suppose, I don't know, in terms of like where I started in, in my career journey, it hasn't really been that long, but. Um, I was a German and Chinese student at university, um, expected to sort of like leave and graduate and probably do something to do with German and Chinese. Um, and then for all of my sins, I spent two years helping to run a students' union at Bang University in North Wales. Um, and I think that was sort of like one of these moments that, um. You know, I, I suppose without necessarily being able to say it was community or that sort of sense of working with the community that drove me to, you know, what I wanted to do in the future. Um, essentially, I was like, you know, I, I kind of really liked having a job where you're working with people, you've got a, a set sort of like, um. I know either a population of, of people that, you know, have different needs, aspirations, sort of hopes for the future. And how essentially could I find a job where. You know, I'm working with a group of people like that and, um, and hopefully doing really cool stuff, um, and something that's. Fingers crossed a little bit varied, which I'm sure a lot of you probably know much better than I do, being a clerk definitely is. Um, it's just sort of like, I don't know, ended up after, after my, uh, tenure at the students' union ended, was applying for sort of like roles either in the charity sector. Um, and in sort of like local governance, I've been really lucky, um, to, you know, work with our city council in, in North Wales. And had a couple of chats essentially with the clerk there who, um, sort of, you know, just sort of advised. If, if this is something that you'd be interested in doing, um, he's sort of like, some of the reality of it, you know, you, you find out much more once you start yourself, um. Have a look into this thing called Ilka, that, that could be quite a useful tool to, to, um, do before you sort of like go in and start applying in earnest. Um, and then in August, I, I started here at Werym Town Council, which is probably the best town council in the observable universe. Um. But like, I suppose, I don't know, some of the things that I really wanted to chat about was, um, well, I mean, I've touched on it a little bit, I guess that's sort of like a bit that. Drew me into wanting to work in the sector, essentially sort of like wanting to, to work with people. And it seems to be something that, um, you know, you hear more or less with. You know, from, uh, essentially everybody you chat to in the sector, um, and it's really, really nice. So it seems like there is genuinely a. Um, a really rich network of sort of like, you know, clerks chatting to clerks and giving people that advice. And, um, Emma sort of like mentioned it a little bit, um, sort of like when it comes to. Having really experienced clerks, that's sort of like, you know, um, you've either got the knowledge or you've got the network, which I think are two things that I'm really sort of like starting to appreciate as, um. As I sort of like come into things. And I guess, um, you know, I'm only three or four months in, so I don't really sort of have. Um, I suppose the experience to be able to share directly sort of like from sector, but I think. Um, you know, where some people would say if I was looking twenty years back in my career and talking to somebody that was just starting, um, I suppose if I was sort of like. Chatting to somebody that was thinking about jumping into, into local government, um, and sort of like, you know, what, what it is that, um. You know, like I'd have told myself, I suppose, like twenty weeks before I, I was applying, um. Definitely preaching to the, like to the converted here, but there is just a lot more going on all of the time than anyone gives any sort of like, any credit for. Um, like Emma sort of like sta- said at the start of her story, when, you know, she got into, into her first parish. You know, it's, it's just doing the meetings and writing a couple of letters. Like, um, I know sometimes, you know, there are folks on the street that feel like that is genuinely sort of like what must be going on. Inside the, the four walls of a town council, but, um, you know, definitely is not. And I think that's like very nature of it, something that I, I really appreciate and, and love, you know, no, no two days are ever the same. Um, and it can be a little bit chaotic and, and whatnot. Sometimes it will feel a little bit chaotic and, and like everything's sort of like getting on top of you a little bit, but I think it's, um. I don't know, I, I think that's sort of like variety in your work, um, and in the work that we do in the sector is really, really cool. Um. I think sort of Emma and I, we, we spoke a little bit about, would it be nice to sort of like, you know, try and incorporate some of the personal trumps that we've had and. And things like that before we came on, I was thinking, I, you know, three or four months in, like, what, what have I really got? Sort of like triumph? Why is it, there's nothing wild to, uh, to have achieved yet? Um. But I don't know, on, on reflection, to be honest, I think, um, particularly, I suppose for some of the other folks in, in the call that are, you know, quite new. Um, and we've, we've touched on it a little bit, sort of like, you know, take, take these moments to, to pause every now and again and sort of like look back and think like, what have I been up to in the last couple of weeks or in the last couple of months? Um, I think jobs like this, they're so forward, like forward-facing and sort of like problem-solving. So you're, you're constantly looking at the next problem and fixing that and then throwing it over your shoulder and then looking at the next problem and fixing that. Um, and then you sort of like sometimes forget to look over your shoulder and see the twenty or thirty things that you've improved in, in the community, sort of like that moment to just. Have a little bit of a stop, smell the roses, realise that, you know, what you're actually doing is really, really important. And there's lots of stuff coming out of what you're doing. Um, I think that's sort of like a, a mini mantra that I've got at the moment. Um, and, you know, there are sort of like small things go, or say small things, like, you know, things that I had no sort of like, um. No inkling that I would have been dealing with, you know, six months ago or before I started post. Um, there's a, a toilet that we're looking to. Um, sort of like demolish and renovate and build new, which would be really, really nice for the residents here. And sort of like battling my way through, all right, how do, how do you actually do that as, as a, a person now sat in an office whose job it is to do these things? Because, you know, there's just so much learning. Um, on the spot, um, sort of like in a role like this. And I think. I don't know, we're all quite lucky to, you know, have networks like this, you know, at Scribe. I'm really lucky to work with an amazing clerk here who's an absolutely fabulous mentor. Um, and equally, when you sort of like bump into, into people at a lot of the events, it's, it's really nice just to sort of like have a little bit of a. Sort of like, I don't know, chat and steal each other's homework and be like, you know, we've got this going on. Have you guys had something similar or, or vice versa? I think there's so much value in that. And that's something that, you know, we. Um, we did quite a lot in the, in the student union sector and I'm glad to see it sort of like here in local government as well, because I think, you know. Like, ultimately, we're all on the same team, even though we're working in different places, you know, there's, there's no risk to, um, to sort of like, you know. Essentially lending that, like helping hand to, to people. Um, I feel like I've just sort of like had a, a little bit of a random ramble of like how it is that I got here. Um, some teeny tiny bits that I'm just like, ah, you know, I think this is quite cool about the sector. Um, I don't know, do, do you want to stop me before I?
No, you carry on, Samuel. That's good. Yeah, if you've got some more on your list, I'm enjoying it. It's really good.
No, it is. Um, I guess like, I don't know, I think we were, we were chatting. Um, like yesterday, I, I think sort of like Emma and I on the phone, um, we had. Um, essentially like a little bit of discussion about, you know, what would we do if we sort of like had to do like crossover advice for each other, you know? And I, I, I feel like I got the short straw there because it's probably a lot easier to do the crossover advice for like, you know, experienced clerk telling someone that's very, very new. Sort of like in the sector versus the other way around. Um, but I guess, I don't know, with, with the fresh perspective that I, I, I maybe bring or might not, you know, to, to be confirmed. Um, I suppose like some of the things that Emma spoke about, I, I guess I'd essentially just like to reaffirm, you know, we, we talk about sometimes. Being complacent, that whole like, you know, this is the way that we've always done things. Um, I think some of the like best advice that I've ever heard from anybody is like. If you can do something new, um, and it might go, might go right, you know, there might be an improvement or it might go wrong, but if it goes wrong, you can fix it more or less straight away. Um, like, most of the time it's better to risk it, you know, sometimes you've got to fail your way to, to success. And I suppose sometimes it's that. There's little moments of experiment or there's little moments of innovation and sort of like seeing what might come out of it. Um, you know. Don't do anything dangerous, anybody, or they, they do anything too, too wild. But, um, at the same time, I, I think sometimes it's good to sort of like have a little bit of a tinker, um, in, you know. Like in, in sort of like any role. And I think I'm sort of like forced into this space of having to tinker a little bit while I'm learning on my feet. Um. Whereas, you know, I'm, I'm sure some of the, the more experienced folks probably have. A, a much more rounded idea of what it is that they need to do. But I suppose like, I don't know, I guess that's the one advice that I would give from someone that's just come into something. Um, to someone that's maybe been doing it for a long time. Like, I, I probably mess something up every day, but nobody dies and nothing goes too wrong. Um, like. And, you know, I'm, I'm learning. The worst case scenario is we're, we're learning something because we do it. Um, and I don't think there's ever sort of like a. I don't know, like a, a time that someone should stop, stop like embracing the idea that, you know, things can go wrong, but you might learn out of it in, in your career. Um, I think at, at Alpen, I'll probably stop myself to be honest.
Cool. Thank you. Uh, really appreciate that, Samuel, for sharing your story so far. I'm actually going to call up your mentor, Nicola Gray. Are you there? Do you mind saying a few words?
Hi, John.
Hi, Nicola, how you doing?
Hi, John. Yeah, Sam's in the council chamber, I'm in the office. I, I drew the short straw. Um, I just, I just commented on the chat just to say, everybody needs to get a Sam. Um, every clerk, um, if you're in a larger town council or, or a larger council, get yourself a really competent, young, keen. Eager deputy clerk. Sam has come in as like a breath of fresh air. Um, helped me enormously. We've had a lot of stuff on hold here. Because of things that have been going on and, um, my previous deputy, um, focused very much on operations and we weren't able to get strategic stuff going. Um, because we were both absolutely stretched to the limit. So it was great for Sam to come in, um, with some previous strategic experience as part of a student union. Um, and, and I've literally thrown him in at the deep end and he has really run away with it. So, um, it's been absolutely brilliant. As he said, we both make mistakes every single day. Um, and what's really key, I think, to being a clerk. Is having that trusting relationship that you can have with someone else that you are working with. We've got, we've got a much bigger team here than just the two of us. But to have a trusting relationship that Sam and I are developing means the world because you actually know that when you make a mistake, someone's got your back. So, um, I'll always have everyone's back here because ultimately it all falls on my shoulders. But. Knowing that someone will also have my back and bail me out when I'm in a meeting and floundering and struggling and actually Sam can step in and. Take over because I'm not having a great day, because I'm a bit tired, is absolutely fantastic. So I would, I would say. From my perspective, if you are in a larger, larger office, larger town council, get yourself a Sam.
Ah, lovely. You must be so pleased. It's worked out. You know, it's worked.
Really am, yeah.
Excellent. So, given Emma's advice there, um, getting a mentor and then Samuel, uh, having a mentor through Nicola. I was knocking up a Google form, uh, and I'm going to, um, try and help. People become a mentor or a mentee, that's the right word. Um, so I've just dropped it there in the chat. I'll also share it in my email. Um, so if you, you can be a mentor, if you think you would like to be a mentor. And or, or you're looking for a mentor, fill out that form and I'll try and pair you up. I, I'll get all the data in. And then I'll email and try and pair you up, uh, to find a mentor, because that is super important. Um, you know, we've got a lot of. Uh, new clerks on this Zoom, got a lot of people that can make themselves available to be a mentor. So, yeah, feel free to fill out that form. And then I will, um, yeah, I'll try and pair you up. So Claire, you had a question. Claire Anderson, do you want to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, Sam about his experience doing the Silca because it's something that I'm. Thinking of starting, um, just wondered how you found it, how did you manage it sort of whilst you were working at the same time, things like that.
Please also share a little, sorry, Claire, just share a bit, little, share a little bit about yourself. Um, how long have you been doing? Where are you based? What are you doing?
I'm based in Cambridgeshire and I'm an assistant clerk, um, in a parish council. So I've been. Doing it for, just coming up for a year, so I'm quite new to the role, but lots of learning's been happening.
I think, um, like, the, the bad news is I've, I've only done, only done, I think that might be, uh, might be a, a sort of like John imagining that I've done my Silca as well, like, uh. Hopefully at some point in the future. So there might well be someone that's better placed to answer a question like that than me. Um, I guess the one thing that's sort of like chatting to, because I don't know, sort of like, um. I think the way that we've planned, sort of like me doing my Silca in post here at the moment is essentially sort of like a bit of a year to. Um, sort of like find my feet a little bit, I suppose, like, um, like you've done in, in post at, at the moment, as it sounds there. And like some cool advice that I've heard that I'd. Be quite keen to put into practice and maybe I can sort of like make you my, my guinea pig in that spaces. Um. Like a lot of people have sort of like talked about essentially lining a lot of the elements that are covered in the Silk Road with, you know, sort of like what you might be doing genuinely through sort of like the. Um, I guess the, the calendar, um, at your council, you know, there are, there are people that I've spoken to that have done it in the past and they've gone, you know, I was. Covering a lot of the budgeting areas as we did the budget, so you know, like essentially it was all really, really.
Kind of learning on the job. Yeah.
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah, it looks like a lot of the modules, kind of, a lot of the modules kind of match up with things that you're having to do anyway. So it's kind of managing. But also making sure you've got the study time as well, like you're not just kind of doing it through your work. I guess that's what I was kind of a little bit worried about.
Cool. Um, you, yes, but you've done your Ilka, haven't you, Samuel? And you, you don't need to be enrolled to do that. That's something anyone can do. Um, because I was, I, I didn't actually know this, but yeah, my dad's. Someone's, all right, let me just mute Nicola. Um, yes, yeah, I'll, my dad's partner's interested in getting into it. I said, just do the Silca, but. I don't think she can do it unless she's in a role. So then she has to do the Ilka, doesn't she, which you don't need to be in the role.
Because it might be quite intense to be honest, doing, um, like, I don't know, running yourself through the, the whole Silca cup, like, um, course before you, you get into person. I think if anything as well, it was quite useful. You know, just for getting a little bit of an understanding doing the Elka. And it wasn't a huge, huge, huge amount of, of time. So like, um, yeah, no, if there are people that are interested in jumping into the sector, I'd definitely say, you know. Sort of clear, clear a week or a couple of weeks and, um, and sit down and do, uh, do your Elka beforehand.
Oh, it's a couple of weeks. Excellent. Okay, Lisa, you want to chime in? Luca?
Hello. Um, I've been a clerk for eighteen years, I think. And I'm doing my Silca now and there's thirty learning outcomes in it. It covers clerk and responsible financial officer role. I'm only a small parish council, so I'm not brilliant at everything at all, really. But, um, the learning outcomes are, are quite intense, some of them. And I think if anyone was thinking of doing Silca, you really do need to set aside one whole day a week. To really get to grips with it. Um, so my advice to any clerk is think carefully about it and get a learning agreement with your council. Before you start, which I did get, because it does take a huge chunk out of your week. But on the positive side, you, I learn new things from it every day. Um, I'm finding it extremely interesting. Um, and this lovely book is getting very well used. So, um. It, I would highly recommend it if anyone's thinking of doing it.
Great, thank you, Lisa. And I spotted someone who is currently doing Silca, Andrew Hockbin. Are you, you want to chime in? And then I'll come to you, Kim, next.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. Um, I started the Silca, I'd done a year's clerking. So they, they now require you to do a year if you're new, just in case you sort of give up some, but I think that was part of the issue. So I did a year. Obviously, that was quite a steep learning curve. Started the Silca in February of this year. And we finished, there are six sessions, it's all done over, well, for Essex anyway, it's done over Zoom. There was no. Um, actual sort of like physical meetings and we finished in October. And now I'm preparing all the notes and writing up. I've started, you, you write a fairly short personal statement. It's extremely interesting. You learn an awful lot. It's a lot of work. Um, and you've got to be quite disciplined and I'm, I only work part-time. Um, I can see the previous colleague said that. previous colleague said that you, in an ideal world, yes, it would be very nice to have a day paid to do it, but my world isn't quite like that. So I'm sort of squeezing it in here and there. I think they allow me three hours a week to do it. So it is a lot of work and I believe they're going to change the course next year. So anybody who's qualified to do it, um, you know, with a year, um, would probably be be, you know, I'd probably advise them to to get joined up soon, because there might be a bit of a gap, I'm not quite sure. The Ilka, I think, is just the introductory course, isn't it? I don't know anything about that. I just did the Silka. Um. So it's, it's very interesting, but it is quite a lot of work to do.
Thank you, Andrew. Yeah, if anyone knows what those changes will be next February, uh, put your hand up. But over to you, Kim.
Really to echo what Lisa and Andrew have said. So I've been doing this now for fourteen months. Um. And I think I would have been far better off if I'd done Ilka first, because it would have given me the grounding that I needed to understand the ins and the outs of of everything being completely new to clerking. Um. I have, however, done the Ilka more recently and I'm doing the Silka now on on the back of it. And that's definitely helped give me some more, um, I think foundational knowledge, if you like, for all the different legislation and so on that that needs to be quoted. But, yeah, I think the time um needed to to focus on pulling together all your answers is quite consuming. But I think worth it. I'm learning, like, you know, Lisa said, I'm learning something brand new every day in in the normal sense anyway, but with Silka, it's just helping get there that little bit faster.
Cool. Thank you, Kim. Um, I'm going to, yeah, Gemma, uh, Lake, are you there? Uh, do you want to say hi? Uh, you've recently completed your Silka. And then anyone else have any questions? Feel free to raise your hand. Gemma, are you still there?
I am. I won't go on camera because I got up late this morning, so I do look a bit of a mess with the school run and everything with the wet weather. Um. But, yeah, I mean, I, if I'm being honest, I struggled to complete my Silka. Um. Doing the sort of, um, Zoom learning courses was absolutely fine. I was able to fit that in around the role. Um. But at the time that I was doing my Silka, my, um, council were wanting to implement, um, charges in our car park. So we were going out for tender. I had a lot of onsite meetings with, um, car park operators, which took up a lot of my time. Um. So I was quite behind with everybody else in my course. And I did find that I was working doing my Silka up until sort of ten, eleven o'clock in the evening. Um. So it definitely is not for the faint hearted, but obviously, it's worthy in the sense of the benefits that you also get for your council in terms of obviously having that general power of competence as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Emma. Uh, Gemma, uh, sorry. Um. Anne Muston, are you still there? Do you want to unmute yourself? Turn your video on? If possible. Hi, Anne. You, so you were talking about encouraging others to become councillors. Yeah. So what, do you want to talk about that? Not, there's sort of a question there.
Um. Yeah, there there are several things. I'm actually not a clerk. Um. I'd still rate myself as a fairly new councillor. Um. And we've got a brilliant clerk in Yvonne Murray. Um. We've had a lot of changes in the parish council and I just, I I it's for me, it's trying to get people to work together. So everything that has been said is really important. But I just wonder how, particularly for smaller councils like the village councils and in in Cambridge, how you can help encourage people to become councillors and how you can get younger councillors in. Um. What what have some of the veterans, veteran clerks done? Um. Because this is something that we're trying to do to to engage more. Um. And any tips would be, we be useful. We've, we've talked about trying to talk to other people in our our local parish councils around us and that is coming. But it is a slow process and that's, that's a really difficult thing. And some people will give up. Um. We've lost councillors because of them, them working full time or them having children or illness and things like that. And it's just, what do you do? How do these experienced councillors? How how do you get, um, clerks rather? How do you get councillors to to come? And how do you get them to stay and work with you?
Who wants to go? So I'm going to go to Emma, Samuel. I've got an idea, but, yeah. Emma?
I mean, Anne's quite right. I mean, it is a challenge, you know. I think the responsibilities of being a town or parish clerk, uh councillor um, is not necessarily fully understood. Um, I took tech, fortunately, um, you know, we're fully um, fully subscribed, though we have had a couple of people stand down and we've had to fill those by co option. Uh, we're just on the cusp of the eligibility for the general power of competence. So obviously, at the time, we were over uh that threshold. Um. I think you have to make it relevant, the role of a councillor. And I think sometimes relevance is not it, we're not helped by the likes of the vicar of Dibley and things like that. Um. And to a degree, we're also not helped by Hand of the Orthon, you know, all those things, the sensationalised side of of parish and town councils. Um. Just concentrate on the positive side of things. You know, the reason that we are in working for our community, be it a clerk or be it a councillor, you know, you're providing local services for local people.
Samuel, any other thing to add?
Yeah, no, I I know, um, I know that the brief is sort of like, you know, uh, any experienced folks, um, sort of like any, any point is there. But to be honest, I I feel like a lot of the time, um, literally just talk about what you do, like all of the time, like what, you know, what it is that your your town council or parish council or whatever is um is up to. And I suppose like sometimes, you know, essentially, the more that people are sort of like awareness, it's that awareness sharing piece, like, um, if you're talking about the good work that you're doing, if you're talking about challenges that you've got that, you know, um, like people might be interested in, you know, if there's a big hot topic issue in in sort of like the locality, um, that's normally where, you know, people are sort of like more willing to to step forward and stuff. And, um, like from my time sort of in the students' union sector, you know, working with quite a lot of elected people that, you know, I guess a lot like, um, sort of like councillors would sort of ultimately just volunteer a bit of time to to work towards something that, you know, they're sort of like a little bit interested in. Um. Or, you know, that they they feel passionately about. Um. Like, as unonorous, I guess, as you can make, being a councillor for a lot of people, um, as possible, is is probably for the best. I can't remember who it was that mentioned it, but, you know, some people have stepped back because of, um, sort of like um, child responsibilities and and things like that. And I suppose, um, you know, some of the stuff that Emma was talking about a little bit earlier, where it was that sort of streamlining of some of the committees and meetings, just to make sure that, you know, ultimately, the the big decisions that matter to those people can be made in as few rooms as possible, I suppose, just so that, you know, things can sort of like trickle along as as quickly as they can do there. Um. But like, yeah, if, in in a word, I'd say passion. If if you can show that, you know, you and sort of like the the council or parish councillors and entity is really passionate about what they do and talking about it all of the time. Like, passion is infectious. Other people will go like, oh, you know, actually, this is really worth getting involved in.
Yeah, and that works for both sides, councillor and also uh be being a clerk or uh at working in at the council. I mean, I love that. Again, this is why I love Emma and Samuel. They do share, uh, you know, what actually happens. That's part of it. It's good marketing for the industry. I mean, most of the stuff you share is on LinkedIn. You should also look about other channels, Instagram, even TikTok, to do that, to share what's going on. I mean, I'm going to pull up Lisa next. I I just want to add to that. I think also, it's, you know, a lot of, um, young people, they're finishing their degree, struggling to get a job, you know. And this is would be, you know, this will make them stand out on their CV if they're a councillor as well. Um. When they're going for those job interviews, they've done their degree, they might have their previous work experience, working in cafes or or shops or et cetera. But if they have on there, they're also a councillor and all the things that they're going to learn to be a councillor, that will make them stand out. And probably, you don't need to, you probably, you need to kind of keep an eye out for them. So people that you know in your community who have, you know, is eighteen, nineteen, twenty year old, twenty one year olds finishing uni, uh, it's kind of approaching them and saying, why don't you do this? Because it definitely will make look good on their CV. Uh, Lisa? You've got something to add?
Well, um, the original question was how to encourage uh, new councillors, wasn't it? Yes, I'm at that age where I get brain fog. Um. The way I do it is, uh, I may be attending a speed awareness public consultation. It may be the parish assembly. It it may be someone on the email saying how awful the parish council are. And I get a, I think, over the eighteen years I've done it, I've had a bit of that. So I challenged them back and I said, well, come and join. So even if they are a negative Nelly, I I say, we've got, we've got a vacancy, we can go through a co op co option process. Come and join and see and speak and stand up for what you think is right. Um. And that's the way I encourage them on, including one that's going to join tomorrow night. So, um, that's, that's a top tip. But it is, um, quite scary if someone's being quite, quite vocal about an issue they're having in the parish, but that's the way I tackle it. And and fifteen years ago, I did that. It was a man who wanted to divert a public footpath off of his land. And he went on and on about it and blah, blah, blah. And I said, well, why don't you join the parish council? And about seven years later, he became the chairman. So, there you go.
Nice one, Lisa. Nice recruitment strategy there. Converting a negative into a positive there. I love it. Um. Anything else? Any, any other questions? Any other advice? Um, any other topics? I'm just gonna go while people are thinking of anything. We've still got six minutes. I want to go back to Emma. What is this GPC stuff you're talking about? What's all that about?
Uh. So for those that are qualified, uh, it's the General Power of Competence, which came out of the Localism Act two thousand and eleven. Um. Actually, you can do a lot of stuff without the general power of competence. However, um, when the town council was fifty years old, well, it's celebrating its fiftieth anniversary this year as being a town council, as opposed to a parish council. Uh, what could we do to celebrate our general power, uh, our birthday? Um. And never when the, you're doing your silk silk portfolio and they say, what can you do with the general power of competence? I bet no one says they can have their own range of beer and gin. So.
There we go. That's gonna attract the young ones.
Yeah. Uh. So we went, we worked with Buntingford Brewery, who is just outside Royston in Hertfordshire. Um. And we have Stockfold Gold, uh, which is a session ale. Now, unbeknown to me until recently, session meant that, uh, uh, you, uh, can, it's a low alcohol beer. It's about three point five percent by volume. Um. And you can drink a lot of it. How you go for a session, basically. Um. It's a golden bitter. Drink it slightly chilled, very nice. Um. And then we also worked with a local, uh, distillery, uh, just outside Bedford um, for a small batch of gin, a hundred and twenty bottles. And it colour changes. It changes colour from it's blue, you put a mixer in it and it goes a lovely lilac colour. Um. But that's the sort of thing that you can do. The general power of competence allows you to do anything that an individual could do.
Awesome. I think we've got to end on that note. That's a good end there. Um. Really good example of actually, I mean, that's a community, you know, the community get pride of their own brew, you know, uh, gin and beer. That's a really good example of doing good for the community. So really appreciate Samuel and Emma coming along to talk today. Um. We're gonna do our group selfie, so make sure you turn all your video on. Um. So we can do our group selfie. Get that video on. And then I'm gonna grab my, oh, let me put you guys over here, so I'll get a bigger screen. Um. Get my screenshot ready. Okay, everybody, wave and say thanks.
Thank you.
Awesome. Um. But, yeah, I've also, I've got six people registered for the mentor and find a mentor. We can do better than that. You know, we had well over seventy, uh, registrations today. Um. Because, yeah, I think like the way the program could work, I'll just connect you up, you know, I guess as a mentor and mentee, just commitment to half an hour a, uh, meeting a month. Uh. And then maybe also on hand on WhatsApp, just to send messages for tips and advice, really is worth doing. I have my own mentor. Everyone should have a mentor, even if you're experienced. Um. But, yeah, so register on that and I'll try and hook you up. Otherwise, have a really good day. Cheers all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye, thanks.
Thank you.